All right, it is 5:30. We are ready to begin. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The West Aranacoy Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region and that this school district building sits on the homelands of the Ananduaga Sanaka of the Hoden'oshaun Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn, and live.
Thank you, Ms. Bornea. All right, thank you, everybody. Before we kick it off, I'd like to thank everyone for their participation today in our board workshop, especially to our administrative team for all the time and effort that you guys put into pulling together all of these materials and really making it a great session for all of us. So, well, thank you very much. All right, the first item on the agenda for our meeting this evening is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Yes.
Any changes?
Yep.
You didn't put that in the...
We do have two changes tonight. I would like to add H8, Special Recognition, and then add H9, which are the RISE contracts.
All right, do we have a motion? Motion, Ms. Wall, and a second, Mr. Schaubel. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The next item on our agenda is public comment. And I do believe we have one person signed in for public comment. With that said, I'm going to quickly go over the public comment protocol. Community members are always welcome to speak at West Aranacoy School Board meetings. If you wish to speak, please sign, please indicate so when you sign in. You will be called to speak in the order that you are signed in. To ensure respect to the people and process involved, the board requires speakers to adhere to the following conditions. One, not make any comments related to a personnel matter. Written statements related to personnel matters can be submitted to the district clerk. Two, when asked, come forward, stand at the podium designated for public comment, and state your name and address for the record. Your remarks will be limited to three minutes. And three, place any written comments or additional materials you may have brought in the folder on the podium. We ask that all comments are respectful, relevant, and timely. Comments that are a restatement of a previous view made by the same speaker, personal attacks or allegations could result in the speaker being asked to stop within the parameters of the court of conduct. The board will not be responding to comments during this session, but please know we are listening. That said, we have Mr. Nolan signed in for public comment. Thank you, Wade Lopovia.
Good evening, board, and congratulations to the newly elected officials up there. I-Square, my name is Mike Nolan. I live at 350 Kings Highway North and a proud Aranacoy community member, also the owner of I-Square. And really here tonight, you have some I-Square on your agenda, some I-Square business on your agenda, but that's not really what my message is about tonight, more message of gratitude. I've enjoyed a relationship with the West Aranacoy School Board for quite some time now, dating back to 2011, and initiating a pilot agreement that was somewhat unorthodox in the length of time and the parameters and the way it was structured and the payment schedule accordingly. For those of you not that familiar with it, we, instead of paying property taxes on the I-Square properties, we pay a pilot payment, a payment in lieu of taxes. And we, it was structured quite a bit different. Most traditional cometa pilots begin at zero taxation and over a period of time, 10 or 15 years, escalate to 100% of traditional tax model. Ours was set up quite a bit different, started at quite a higher number. It started at the pre-demolition value of what the properties at I-Square, so it didn't go, it never made it to ground zero. Our payments initially, as far as the school's concerned, were about $60,000 a year, considerably more than it would have been under the traditional model, and escalating 2.5% per year. And now we are in our 10th year this year. To date, we've paid $658,000 into the West Aranacoy School District in over those 10 years. And the 2024 payment would be $76,706. We put our money where our mouth is. We are interested. We love the education process and what you bring. We also benefit I-Square in the sense that we have, we employ quite a few. Over the years, we've had 150 high school students, most of them from IHS, that have worked at I-Square, both at IBC and the market at I-Square. And they come prepared and are very, it's great because we can bring them to the work ethic side of things where you've already given them the foundation and it's much appreciated. In return, on the other side of things, we try to be a supportive community development. We host numerous, and over the years, well over 100 fundraising-style events at I-Square specifically for school programs, mostly in sports, car washes, ice cream socials, tap takeover. We're always looking for ways. We never ask for anything when doing them, similar to things like...
Three minutes, so if you just want to...
Okay, all right, we'll wrap it up. But really, it's just a message of gratitude and thankfulness for this board. You've always supported I-Square, and hopefully, we've done the same in return. Thank you very much for listening today.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. May I have the recommended resolution, Ms. Lustig?
Be it resolved that the minutes of the July 9, 2024 reorganizational meeting be approved as presented?
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Buller, and a second, Ms. Wall. Any questions, comments, discussion around the minute? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the report by the superintendent. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I don't have a formal report today because we spent the last seven hours together. So, we covered a lot of ground, but I want to just, again, thank everybody for your investment of time, your attention, the conversation that we had together. We hit a lot of topics. I want to thank the assistants and everybody that stands behind you and preparing for that, like we did a reach out and kind of set the blocks for the year. And I also just want to recognize during that session, I shared a little bit about what's happening over the summer. Ms. Miga's going to share a little bit more, just a flavor of some of the curriculum writing. But I also just want to recognize all the hardworking people across the district that are preparing for the school year. I think I put a little message in the quarter, certainly put something in my message back to, welcome back, brother of the staff. But every year, it's amazing, you know, my wife kind of kids me because when we flip the calendar to August, there's just a different tone, it's a whole different level of energy. But we always get it done, you know, and I think that's a tribute to the people that work at our schools and just the dedication to making sure that every single inch of our buildings are ready to receive our students. So, just want to send out a shout out to them and say thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you, Dr. Johnson. The next item on the agenda is the report of the treasurer and approval of the financial statements and treasures report. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the June 30, 2024 financial statements and treasures report be accepted as presented?
Do I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Betty, and a second, Ms. Copeland, and Dr. Johnson?
Brennan, anything you got on that?
I mean, kind of in line with what Dr. Johnson mentioned. We did spend a good portion of the workshop talking about end-of-year finances, which is just reflective. I'll just add one thing that doesn't necessarily come through, the finances piece is more reflective of the treasures report. We are in good, a good cash standing at this point. We talked about this in the past. Because of our, because we have sufficient reserves, we're able to essentially make it through the summertime where there's no revenues coming at this point, no state deed, it's before any tax collection. But yeah, we're able to still pay our bills without engaging in a borrow, because that's an indicator of a district that's in good fiscal standing. And that's true again this year, too.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brennan? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is business. First item under business is business. Dr. Johnson?
I'll turn it over. Mr. Brennan, you have some updates of the work that's happening this summer?
Yeah, this is a, this is a piece we, because we were talking so much about finances, we didn't quite get into some of the facility updates, although Cory from CPL was able to provide us some pieces, so there'll be some overlap. But also, I'll talk about some of our more, more upfront, visible projects within the district, too. So, these are facility updates for us, and this is just taking a look at it. So, obviously, this is the RISE project. That's been a big focus of the district way back when with the generous incentive our community approved it in 2023. The RISE project is finally approved. And so, we received approval very recently, just at the beginning of summertime. And because we're able to leverage under state and national contracts, we were able to get some work done immediately. This is really tied to, really, two major initiatives. One, the playgrounds at Rogers and Iroquois, this is really the brainchild of the students of those buildings in terms of the needs for child playground, these middle schools. Because, you know, we call them middle schools, but aren't necessarily a traditional middle school in terms of grade band, you know, it's a four through six building, and the desire to have some playground equipment for them. So, you can see some images here that I got fit, and I'm not sure what the bottom one is called, but...
Spear.
It's a spear. It looks awesome, whatever.
Spear? I climbed it already.
So, I'm really excited, I'm sure kids are on it already, but really, really excited for Rogers and Iroquois for the start of this new school year, to be able to get at those pieces. The other piece we're able to leverage again through the state and national contracts is rooftop replacement at Rogers as well. This kind of is a rooftop that impacts really the fifth and sixth grade weights that they go with those little kids. So, that's, that's really been where the work has been focused this summer. Again, we had to wait until we had FCD approved before we could really dive in on those pieces. But also on the RISE project, there's a lot more work to be done. And not all work is able to be prepared through those state and national contracts, and that's why we went out to bid. So, on the 7th of this month, we went to bid for the major trades. And that's an action I know on today's agenda. The results were favorable to the district. So, we always engage in, you know, kind of the what-if, worst-case scenario, like, you know, just based on escalation of costs, I mentioned, you know, the, the committee approved the project in May of 2023, and here we are bidding in August of 2024. That's a, that's a huge challenge for architects and construction managers in terms of how do you, how do you predict what things are going to cost? But as, as a result, just even at the timing of the bids, we had a lot of contractors that were hungry for fall work, which we're going to be able to provide, because a lot of their work for schools is really concentrated in the summer. And so, all the work that we had projected, we'll go into the community about the project itself. You know, the major items, like the things I talked about already around the playgrounds and the rooftop areas, but of course, the bridge work between connecting Digg and the high school, rigging and lighting improvements at Aranacoy High School, the replacement of the DOES facility at Washington Avenue that's being moved into what will be a renovated facility of the retired elementary school at Lakewood, Lakeview. And, and of course, another major aspect of it is the reconception and renovations of the libraries at Rogers and Iroquois Middle Schools, too. So, those are, those library and media centers are going to be brought to the state of the art, and we're excited for that as well. So, all those elements that we talked about with the committee, they are able to be awarded, including some really important necessary security upgrades for doors at Digg and Sanaka Schools. And the bids were favorable enough, there's an additional $600,000 in funds available for contingencies. We always build in some contingency funds, but this will provide us an extra layer of protection as, you know, when you start to rip apart a wall at Rogers to renovate the library, you're not necessarily, you don't always know what you're going to get once you get in there. So, this will also help ensure that we get the work done at the quality we want it done to. So, that, that's something very exciting, and that's an item for consideration at today's meeting. That's the RISE project, but, you know, besides major capital work, there's also a lot of other work going on around the district. This doesn't necessarily represent all of it, but this is some of the more forward-facing things. As we walked in today, I could look over our board's shoulders out here, and that's, that's the work in the district office. It's really a security improvement. It mirrors the improvements we made at, at our schools in terms of secure vestibules. We obviously prioritize our schools, but now we're getting back to district office here as well. And then there'll be some other renovation work in terms of the lobby itself using updated flooring and paint to mirror our district palette for, for any aspect as well. There's been a lot of site improvements out there, too. So, at the south end of this building, paving of the, kind of was a temporary lot out there that's made permanent. The image there is of the former gravel lot, had the south end of the turf field. That was identified as a safety concern from our kitchen staff, so we included that within the budget as well to make that a permanent paving feature. And then also, kind of it worked out well tied to the playgrounds at Rogers, using some similar contractors there to be able to do some field restoration and installation of the irrigation system. The soil there at Rogers is very sandy, and so therefore, in order to keep any kind of, you know, grass alive and therefore usable field, that's where the irrigation system is. And then we've got some concrete work occurring throughout the district. These are some of the highlights. So, at the high school, this is kind of what we're calling Phase Two of kind of the front of the high school. So, we kind of focus at the south end with, near the counseling centers. And now we're moving up to the north end where the music rooms are. Really, there's really two major goals of that, or three, I would say. One is to address a degradation of the existing concrete work over time. The other thing is to improve some of the snow cleaning areas. They had, it was challenging the existing footwork there in terms of being able to plow without rubbing up the lawn. And then also pulling back some of the concrete work that was abutted in the building causing some water infiltration through the walls, too. So, it really addressed all three of those things. Getting at the concrete work we didn't complete last year before it got cold outside the athletics shed building that was constructed last year, and then rebuilding the loading dock over at the Evans and the Robb Learning Center. So, again, there's a lot of other improvements going on, a lot of, some flooring pieces, but these are kind of the, these are some of the more forward-facing that we and our community members see out there. In addition, obviously, that RISE project. And that's updating on projects.
Any questions for Mr. Brennan? Just an opportunity to say thank you to everybody involved in the planning process, the patients involved in waiting for the state's approval, and then really the, the speed to act on some of these projects, getting started as quickly as possible. Well, thank you to you, our entire facilities team. The next item on the agenda is instruction. Dr. Johnson?
So, we do have an update from Ms. Miga, from some of our summer work. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Miga.
Dr. Johnson, yeah, just a quick update on just some of the many different curriculum writing opportunities that are going on around the district, as well as some professional learning. And so, we approve a certain amount of summer curriculum work to happen each summer through our district curriculum council, or DCC. And we have been able to get a lot done, as you can see from this slide, this year. And these might, this might represent writing new curriculum, it could be revisions, it could be... So, that might be a final stage of the process for some of this curriculum, where it's been more to prove. Now, it's just kind of finishing up that process. But you can see we are hitting a lot of different content areas and a lot of different subjects, and some that cross, you know, all the content areas and subjects like RTI, as well as credit recovery. So, we're bringing together a team to help develop some curriculum tied to one of our newer curriculum regulations. So, just want to give a shout out to our directors of instruction, Kim and Orlando, as well as our building principals and all of the teachers and staff who has, have helped to make all of this work happen because it's, it's been busy for sure. In addition to the curriculum work, we've also engaged in professional learning. This isn't all the professional learning we've done this summer, but these are just some of the highlights. We had a team attend a regional equity network, which was two days of really networking, but also professional learning. We had a K-12 representative team of both teachers and administrators attend a Zaretta Hammond's workshop that Bosie's put on, and she is the author of Culture, Response, and Teaching in the Brain. And we have used her work quite a bit within some of the work we've done in districts. We engaged another cohort in our Dr. Hunter cohort for, so this is, this is the work that results in the creation of critical inquiry projects for the students of the teachers who engage in this cohort. So, and one of the great things that we're starting to transition to is we've worked, obviously, with Dr. Hunter for many years now, and we're starting to build some of that capacity within our own staff to be able to even more rightly turnkey some of his work. So, Lindsay Porter, who is our new humanities TOSA, is working really closely with Dr. Hunter to be able to, be able to run some of the sessions that he's typically run for us throughout the school year. She's going to be able to do some of that, working closely with him. So, we're kind of building the capacity within to make sure that we can have that experience for even more teachers. And coming up in a couple of weeks is our new teacher induction and orientation. So, we've been planning for that, and are really excited to get, to welcome all of our, our new staff. And one other piece that I wanted to mention, because this is something you'll be updated on throughout the year as the Board of Education, is at the end of last school year, we were selected to be one of the districts for the NICED Plan Pilot, and PLAN stands for Project-Based Learning and Assessment Network. And specifically, we submitted an application to pilot basically project-based learning at, in our ninth grade Global History and Geography classes. And so, just wanted to, again, remind people of some of the details. It's, again, project-based learning, which is helping the state to understand what could be some alternative assessments that could be explored. So, but this doesn't, as of right now, this doesn't replace the region's exam. So, this, we're piloting this in a grade level and content area that doesn't end this year in a region's exam, just because we still have to administer all of the regions. I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. But it's going to, being part of the pilot, helps the state to explore what policies are going to be important to support schools in, in actually implementing some sort of alternative assessment that might be more project-based learning or project-based versus maybe the typical region's assessment. So, some of the benefits that we're going to get from that is they've actually created these planned technical assistance centers, and they're going to be sending people to us to help with some of the professional learning, but also monitor the implementation of these pilots really across the state. And I think we were the only Monroe County, it may have been one more, but I think we were the only Monroe County district to, to be selected. So, we're very excited about that. For our, they grouped all the different pilots into three categories. Ours is inquiry-based approaches with learner profiles, and there's a few more details around that. And we were selected for that group because we have done a lot around inquiry already. So, we're not one of the groups that might be starting right at the beginning with some of the approach to instruction. And so, this is going to focus on inquiry-based pedagogical approaches and assessments designed around specific learner profile to help measure a student's individual performance. And I just wanted to share all of the different pieces, and this, Kim Crystal's certainly taking, is our humanities director, taking the lead in putting this all together. But we do have both, so she's our team leader, but we have both a district and building teams identified to support this work. And then some of the things that they've already started to work on are an action plan, specific goals for this year, and then potentially beyond with a long-term goal. So, we're working through all of those different pieces. So, once those are, you know, put together, that's something I can come back and share with you. But I just wanted you to know that we're well into this process and really excited about the opportunity to see where it takes us. So, thank you, and if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Miga. Very exciting summer, to say the least. That's great. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is personnel, and the first agenda item is wave of the second reading. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the second reading of the personnel agenda dated August 15, 2024 be waived?
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Wall, second, Ms. Copeland. Any questions, comments, discussion before we proceed with the vote? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is personnel. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the personnel agenda dated August 15, 2024, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented?
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Buller, and a second, Mr. Schaubel. All right. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Kramer.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So, tonight, for your approval, we have the resignation of three elementary teachers and two teaching assistants, a school nurse, two food service helpers, and a help desk internet coordinator. We have changed an employment status of a laborer to grounds equipment operator, a music teacher 1.0 to music teacher 1.8, and 1.2 TOSA is our coordinator of performing arts, a cleaner to custodial assistant, an elementary teacher 1.0 to elementary teacher and special assignment is a K-3 library and media specialist full-time. We have the appointments of our certified formationary staff of two elementary special education teachers, an English teacher, school social worker, school counselor, secondary special education teacher, another elementary teacher, and elementary special education teacher. We have certified substitute and part-time teachers of a long-term substitute in business education, an English teacher, and a long-term substitute in math. Six teaching assistants, occupational therapist, an LPN, Licensed Practical Nurse, teacher aide, secretary to the director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics, computer support assistant, and principal's secretary, and at will per diem intern, intern administrator, a contract sub-nurse, eagles-carrying food service helper, and a contract substitute teacher. We have the recommendation for a volunteer for our extracurriculars and successful completion of in-service and professional learning to 14 staff members and unpaid leave of absence to a math teacher.
That's a nice, quiet personnel. Do we have any questions for Ms. Kramer? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? That is 6-0-1, Ms. Lustig.
So, before we go on, can I just make one note?
Absolutely.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Kramer and so many people that stand behind all of these different personnel recommendations and the hires that you just approved. Certainly hasn't been as busy as you noted, and so appreciate that. That starts with the canvassing you do and all the work you do to put together the committee and hiring process. So, thank you. Also, I want to recognize Erica Kane, who's took the time to be with us tonight. We're very excited to welcome her as the new secretary at Rogers Middle School. Yeah, we'd be very proud of that. As you know, there's a lot of favorite faces that I have at Rogers, but she's one of the most consistent that I see walking in. She has been a colleague over there at Rogers, South Lawn. And she's been a phenomenal support for our students in the classroom and around the building. And we're super excited for her to take on this next chapter of supporting Rogers specifically. It's a great opportunity because, you know, you know, Mr. DiMartino is super excited going into his first full year, being able to build that team together, you, himself, our new AP. So I just want to say congratulations. We're looking forward to a bright future with you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to sing?
No, just singing.
Always get off.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is extracurricular stipends. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the extracurricular stipends dated August 15th, 2024, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion? Two. Mr. By, and a second. Ms. Wall. Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Kramer, anything to add on this?
There are no changes since the July meeting to extracurriculars.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Kramer? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Our next item is fall coaches. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the fall coaching stipends dated August 15th, 2024, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Schopfle, in a second. Ms. Bowler. All right. Dr. Johnson?
I want to turn it over to Ms. Kramer. Ms. Kramer, anything?
Yes, there are some things to our coaches. They are in red in the agenda.
Any questions for Ms. Kramer? All right. All those.
No question. Ice hockey, is that, that's winter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero, Ms. Lustig. Hey, moving on to new business. The next item on the agenda is Management Plan Summary. Dr. Johnson?
So again, we had a chance to spend some time together. We took a look at this early in the morning today. So this is the, we just finished the third year of our management plan, choosing to RISE. And it was one of our most robust years as far as the number of tasks that we had identified to tackle this year. With that, we're carrying over more portions or components of those tasks than we'll be out in past years. But again, as we talked earlier today, we bit off quite a bit. And what I celebrated with you was just the fact that our folks are committed to this and have really dug in deeply into this work and want to make sure that we deliver on some of those promises and those targets that we set out to achieve three years ago. So when you take a look at this, I'm not going to go through everything line by line again with you, but you have a chance to look through that. And certainly let's post it through the community. We'll have it up on our website here shortly. But you scrolled out through the things that we have completed. Again, a lot around curriculum and instruction. We had a chance talking about human resources today. All the things that we've done around creating systems and structures for things like hiring, making sure it's equitable, making sure that we have some standards in place, and then around onboarding and orientation. Some areas when we talk about caring for our staff and really setting them up for success. We now have those really specific checklists and processes in place, which are going to pay huge dividends moving forward. Continuing a lot of work on diversity, equity, and inclusion, as you can see. Completed a great transportation study, resulting in a recommendation to consider some before and after-school transportation at the middle grades. So we're super happy about that. Looked at the neighborhood school configuration. A lot of people were nervous about that upfront, see that. But that portion was looking at the equity. And what that resulted in was a multi-year plan balancing our north and south with some of the opportunities for special classes for our students and some of the other supports there. And you can see some of the things that we carried over. Again, very few of those are in hold. So most of them are just a couple of the final action steps to fully complete those. A lot of them were around kind of our counseling program and some of our, our, just our K-12 comprehensive plan, like our counseling plan. And the reason for that is really we had to get this portrait of the ideal Aron Aquaid graduate in place, which we now have. You know, so now we can be working backwards designing from there across the district. So you can see some of that, refining some of the systems around supervision. We're super excited, going to be launching a new platform to increase the organization, right? Of how we track our, our supervision. You know, we're working on grading. That's another big one. That started how many years ago?
So many.
So many, so many, but the work continues. Some of that was around timing and again, just the readiness. We started making some, some really great partnerships with outside mental health resources. And we put some of those in place at, across the lower grades and been really active. So we have a little bit more work to do with that. But all of those are going to be carried over into the upcoming year, which is our fourth year of our strategic plan. So if there's any questions on that. One note from the board, I thought was a really great comment earlier today, was as we go through these things, just really unpacking some of the reasons why. And so that's something that we'll make sure that moving forward, we're communicating along the way and talking about. And that was really a comment that was made in the spirit of being supportive and making sure that as a governance team, you're mindful of those things in your plans. So I really appreciate your approach to that. So thank you.
It's hard to believe we're going into year four of this and even more hard to believe that we're talking about what might be the next strategic plan. I may finish the five years. So thank you to everybody and all the time and effort that continually goes into getting these, you know, big rocks moving. So thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is NISPA Board Officers Academy. May I have the recommended resolution?
Be it resolved that Matt Sullivan be authorized to attend NISPA's Virtual Board Officers Academy on September 12th, 2024.
So move.
Motion, Mr. By, second, Ms. Bornival. I'll just chine in quickly. NISPA is offering a virtual leadership conference for executive board leadership. And as my first couple of months in the position here, I think it would be a great opportunity for me to further home in on the skillset and be better prepared for the year that comes. Any other questions, comment? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is field trip request. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the field trip request for varsity cross-country athletes to travel to Queensbury, New York from September 13th to September 14th, 2024, be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion? Motion, Mr. Schopfle, next, and a second. Second, Ms. Bowler. And Dr. Johnson?
So this is one that, you know, always comes in right before the start of the year. The reason for that is they have to be invited to this. And so they're not able to submit it earlier until they really know that they're going to be a part of it. But it is one that we participated, me as long as I've been here. They really enjoy it because it's kind of at a higher level. Obviously, they get an experience of traveling together. And as the coach wrote in there, you know, they get to kind of evaluate themselves against some really elite athletes early on in the season. So it's one that I certainly support. And just, the other things in there are just around the cost. So you have all the materials in there, the chaperoning, which meet the standards that we've, that you've defined. So if there's any questions, happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions? All right. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item under new business is therapy dog request. May we have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the request for a therapy dog made by Philip Prinze be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion? Motion, Ms. Bowler, in a second. Second, Ms. Bornival. And Dr. Johnson?
Sure. So again, just super excited. We continue to see our mental health staff expand here with our therapy animals. I'd have to check the numbers, but I want to say that there's four or five across.
This would be five.
Five. So this is Lucy, a golden doodle. I know the board wanted me, our latest colleague at some point, so we'll arrange for that. But, you know, Mr. Prinze went through and has been doing all the work to get the certifications, make sure that, you know, the vaccinations, all that kind of stuff are in place. But I think this is the first one that's dedicated to the high school, right?
Karen McCarthy.
Karen McCarthy, who's just recently, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So this is, this is great. The way I love about Lucy is she's going to be working with Mr. Prinze, who is one of her assistants. So it's kind of a really great duo there, whereas we're working and just supporting our students in different ways across the building, going to be a real value add. So fully supported. If you have any questions, happy to answer those. One thing I will say that we just instituted was part of the regulations, making sure that annually we're checking and that the animals are meeting the requirements around the ongoing vaccinations, keeping up other certifications, those types of things. So we do have a system in place for tracking that. I just wanted you folks to know that.
I will say it's become almost an unofficial norm when folks are nominated for key positions to come to the meetings when the votes are taking place. So I think moving forward for therapy dogs, you can extend that to the, to the process.
Was there a cost for this?
Not, not, no cost to the district.
So our policy, there's no cost to the district?
Yep. Good question.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda is approval of the 24-25 tax levy and tax rate. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the town of Aron Aquaid be authorized to collect school taxes in the amount of $44,454,364 for the 2024-25 school year at a tax rate of $21.306672 per thousand dollars of assessed valuation.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Wall, in a second. Second, Ms. Copeland. Dr. Johnson?
Sure, Mr. Brennan, I was the part of putting this together, so I appreciate that. Anything to add on this, Mr. Brennan?
No, we, we had a great discussion, very thorough during the board workshop that preceded this meeting. Just kind of talked about the ins and outs, how the impacts of setting budget priorities lead to workshops, lead to establishing criteria for fund balance or reserve funds, and how it leads back to the setting of the tax rate and levy. So this was a levy that was approved by voters as part of the 24-25 budget. And the rate is determined by values from the assessor's office to determine the accurate value.
Are there any questions? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda is the review of the 2024-25 APPR Plan. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kramer. Anything you would like to add to this?
Yeah, so this is our annual requirement to approve the APPR Plan. There are no changes. This is part of agreement with our Westron Aquaid Teachers Association. And it's just updated for this year's calendar date.
Any questions for Ms. Kramer? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda is review of the 2024-25 Annual Professional Performance Plan Lead Evaluators and Evaluators. Dr. Johnson?
So again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kramer. Approval for this is anticipated in the September meeting. So, Ms. Kramer, anything to add?
Yes, so this is just an annual requirement to approve the people that will be supervising and evaluating both our teachers and administrators under the APPR.
Anybody have any questions? Send them to Dr. Johnson. The next item on the agenda is a special recognition resolution. May I have the recommended resolution? Go ahead.
Whereas the Westron Aquaid Central School District strives to provide a comprehensive educational experience that balances high expectations, diverse opportunities, intellectual growth, personal responsibility. And whereas the Helmer Nature Center, under the leadership of Director Karen Mizola, has demonstrated a deep commitment, care, and devotion for our students and the families of the Westron Aquaid community by fostering environmental awareness and promoting global stewardship through immersive and enjoyable learning experiences with the natural world. And whereas, the Helmer Nature Center team has promoted its mission for more than 50 years through essential supplemental lessons aligned to learning standards across grade levels and by offering family-oriented activities for every season. And whereas, through community-wide collaboration and meticulous planning, Director Karen Mizola and the Helmer team spearheaded the Aron Aquaid Eclipse Fest, one of the few community-based venues to view the total solar eclipse on April 8th, 2024. And whereas, the Helmer Nature Center continues to be an integral part of the district's curriculum, bringing together countless classes, families, and groups of all ages to learn about, enjoy, and celebrate our natural heritage through the appreciation of the center's woods and wetlands. And be it resolved that the Board of Education recognizes and appreciates the dedicated efforts of the Helmer Nature Center team for its unwavering service to the students, staff, and community of the Westron Aquaid Central School District in pursuit of peak performance.
Thank you, Ms. Lustig. Do I have a motion, please? Motion, Ms. Bornival, in a second. Second, Ms. Copeland. Dr. Johnson?
Sure. So this has become part of our tradition every year to identify a person or a group to celebrate through a special recognition resolution by the Board of Education. Then on opening day, I'll work with, in this case, Mr. Brennan, to make sure that we have representatives. And it'll be a great moment presenting the resolution formally to those staff members that have made these significant contributions to the district. So thank you for the support.
Very well-deserved recognition and thank you for pulling this together. Next item on the agenda is RISE.
We need to vote.
Oops, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, we can do that. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. Next item on the agenda is RISE contracts. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Westron Aquaid Central School District approves entering into contracts with the following companies for their work towards the RISE project: Deep Squall Construction Inc., Thurston Dodeck LLC, T-Bell Construction Corp., Bill, Billiteer Electric, American Paving and Excavating Inc., and Data Automation.
May I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Wall, in a second. Second, Mr. Schopfle. Dr. Johnson?
Sir, anything to add about this?
Kind of preview this a little bit, both with CPL during our workshop, but also during my brief slides in the cattle piece. So this was a result of some good planning by our construction managers as well as CPL in terms of the timing of the, of the bid itself. And as I mentioned, we're able to award all of the work that was indicated when it went to the voters in May of 2023 towards our RISE project. So really excited to bring the recommendation to the board. And then with approval, going on all the work over the next two, for the next two, next year plus, right? Through, I think it's the, if I remember right, the timing said. plus, right, through, I think it's the, if I remember right, the time ascend, uh, winter of 2025, so we'll be doing our final budget, so a lot of exciting stuff to come.
Any questions for Mr. Brennan? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Westron Aquaid Central School District approves the consent agenda, which includes I-2 through I-6.
May I have a motion, please? Motion, Ms. Bornival, in a second. Second, Ms. Borer. To make more efficient use of the meeting time, the Board of Education authorizes the use of a consent agenda as part of the meeting agenda. A consent agenda allows one motion to approve multiple items or items, and items are identified as such on the agenda. The President of the Board will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda and will ask if board members wish to have a discussion or clarification on any specific items contained within the consent agenda. Following the discussion, the Board will then vote on the consent agenda motion. In addition, a board member may request to have an item removed from the consent agenda in order to vote on the motion separately. This evening's consent agenda includes recommendations of the Committee of Special Education, Surplus Furniture Rogers, Surplus Furniture IHS, bid award lunch paper and plastic supplies, and bid award milk and juice supply. Are there any items on the agenda that the Board would wish to have a discussion on or require clarification for? Are there any items on the agenda that a board member wish, would wish to have removed from the consent agenda in order to vote on the motion separately? All right, any general questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is future meetings. Ms. Lustig, do we have any future meetings?
Yes, the Board has a retreat Thursday, August 29th at 5:00 p.m., and then we will have a study session on Thursday, September 5th at 7:00 p.m., and that's here at District Office.
Retreat here? Or is it at the?
Chelsea.
Chelsea.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is executive session. Ms. Lustig, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
No, we do not.
Fantastic. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion, Ms. Wall. Second, Ms. Borer. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everybody, for a fantastic day today. Again, to all of our administrators and staff for all the effort put into the presentations today. Ms. Lustig, thank you so much for all your help with breakfast, lunch, and dinner today, very much appreciated, as well as the very quick turnaround of the room in between the end of the meeting and the start of this one. And to the Board, thank you all, the full day commitment. I know we all have jobs outside of being on the Board, so thank you for your time and paying attention. That is all. Everybody had a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.